Thank you. Welcome, everybody, to our city council meeting, our regular meeting. It is Tuesday, October 19th, 2021, and it is 7:00 PM. We'd like to welcome all that are here in person, as well as those on YouTube Live. We'd like to, we have four of the council members here tonight, minus Councilman Miller. We've got plenty to take care of business tonight. Would you like to begin with a pledge of allegiance? Is there anyone willing to lead us in that?
I can.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Bowman. We'd also like to have an invocation or inspirational thought, and Art Adcox offered to give us an inspirational thought.
It's not too long. There's a folk tale about two employees of a shoemaker. Both were assigned to travel to a remote region and sell shoes to people living there. After several days of hard work, both employees reported back to the shoemaker. One was discouraged, declaring, "What a waste of time. None of these people wear shoes." But the second saw things differently, exclaiming, "What a great opportunity. None of these people wear shoes." Both had the same task and the same challenges. The difference was the way they thought about it. A positive outlook produces positive results. That doesn't mean people with good thoughts never experience bad times. Good thoughts don't shield us from trouble, but they can keep us from going, they can keep us going when troubles present themselves. Good thoughts give us a sense of hope, peace, of strength, and resolution. Good thoughts give meaning and direction to our day-to-day pursuits. Good thoughts empower us to build and bless the lives of others, something that is so needed in a world full of anger and negativity.
Thank you. So true. All right. Any declaration of conflict of interest with anything on the agenda tonight? I'll make my every-two-week declaration. I am in a, the company I work for, Vancon, has a contract with the city right now, and I'm an employee only, and I'm not an owner. So, that's my declaration. We'll move on now to the consent agenda. We have the minutes of our council meeting, work session of October 5th, 2021, and we also have the minutes of our council meeting, our regular council meeting of October 5th, 2021. The council had an opportunity to review those, if you have. Any additions or corrections there? Okay, we also have the bills, our invoice register from October 15th, 2021, of $499,110.48. Any questions or concerns on the bills? Okay, I look for motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept consent agenda.
Good for you. That guy right there usually always did that. All right, we have a motion by Councilman Hathaway. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by, which one of you?
I think it was Lynn.
Councilmember Bowman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Thank you. Public forum, did anybody sign in?
No.
Okay. Anybody here that liked or dressed council? No takers. All right. We have awards to be made. Item number four, Harvest View Sports Park Pickleball Courts, Parking Lot, and Landscaping. Go ahead, Norm.
Mayor and council, you may recall back in June or July, we went out to bid for the pickleball courts and the parking lot and the other accessories to go along with that, the restroom and concession building. Pricing came in quite high on that, and so we decided to go back out to bid for this. We received five bids for the project, to be able to construct the pickleball courts, the landscaping, the parking lot, and the custom restroom that will go there. And we would make a recommendation to award the contractor Stratton and Brought Landscapes, LLC. Stratton and Brought did the landscaping on the soccer field as a subcontractor on that previous project, and so we're confident that they have the ability to do this work and move it forward and get it done, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about the project or about the bids.
Any questions?
I'm excited to get this going.
A great bid.
Very excited.
We're getting a great product for the price that we're getting at.
We absolutely are.
Lot better by waiting, like we did.
Yeah, I think that was the right thing to do.
Yep, it was.
Okay. I look for a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to award the bid to Stratton and Brought Landscapes, LLC, in a not-to-exceed amount of $2,746,743.57 for the Harvest View Park Phase II improvements for the base bid and the two additive alternates.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Montoya. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilman Meekum. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Say nay. Thank you. Item number five, Harvest View Sports Park Pickleball Court, Sports Lighting, Musco State Bid.
So, to go along with those improvements that would be done now by Stratton and Brought Landscapes, we also recommend approving a contract with Musco for the lighting of the pickleball courts, just to go along with the regular contract that you just approved. That will include all of the walkway lighting and the parking lot lighting. This would be just lighting for the pickleball courts themselves with a 50-lumen, sorry, 50-foot candle power, which is the higher power in LED lights, and this is under a state bid contract, so we don't have to go out and get other bids. They've already competitively bid this through the state of Utah, and there is a, then if you're going down two pages, there's a recommended motion, there you go. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions?
Also, these would be installed by the contractor that does the work.
Okay. I would look for a motion if there isn't any comments.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we accept, or award, the contract to Musco Sports Lighting, LLC, for an amount not to exceed $142,864 for pickleball court sports lighting.
We have a motion by Councilman Meekum. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Hathaway. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. Building permits, business licenses.
Yeah, Mayor and council, so there's no business licenses to report this time, so it'll just be the building report. As you can see, we're at a total of 467 total residential dwelling units. That's a makeup of 240 single-family and 227 multifamily. Again, this time last year, we were right about the same pace with single-family, but there's quite a bit more multifamily this year, year-to-date. We've already surpassed all of last year's total residential dwelling units. We're now 37 ahead of pace, still with two and a half months left, so imagine we'll probably end up in the, you know, maybe as much as six, 600 to 700. So, a lot of building going on still, and you can see this time last year, 238, and we ended up with, or I should say total, we were at 291, and we ended up with 430. So, there's still potential to, if we're, you know, on the same pace that we were last year, there's still a lot that could come in this calendar year. So, happy to answer any questions you have.
When's that green column gonna start growing?
Yeah, we have a lot of things that are in the works. This is reflective of building permit, so whether it be this year or next year, that green is gonna be rising regardless, when those projects move forward, the actual building permit.
Okay, thank you. New business resolutions, item number seven, Resolution 10-01-2021, consideration for adoption of a resolution of the City Council of Santaquin City, Utah, authorizing the issuance and sale of not more than $11,500,000 aggregate principal amount of water revenue and refunding bonds, Series 2021, and related matters.
So, Mayor and council, just a little bit of history. I've kind of merged Norm's presentation for the next item with this presentation, because they're really on the same issue. Back in 2000, Santaquin City approved the development agreement for the Summit Ridge area. So, when we approved, and I say we, our predecessors, before all of us were really part of the city, approved the development agreement for the Summit Ridge development, we committed the city to providing infrastructure to support the growth therein, and so that was a contractual obligation that we have to provide that infrastructure to the city. And to this day, a full third of our city is not on irrigation source, and that would be the Summit Ridge area. While they have an irrigation and a culinary system, they have a culinary source into the irrigation system. In January of 2021, Santaquin City Council approved its most recent version of the irrigation water system capital facility plan, and that contemplated the construction of a tank in Summit Ridge that would take that third of our city and, following Waterwise principles, make it so that nearly 100% of our community would be on irrigation water. February 2021, during its budget planning session, you, the council, approved and prioritized the design and the construction of the Summit Ridge irrigation tank and booster pump station. And so that design contract went forward, and we brought on a CMGC. So, in March 2021, Santaquin City approved the design of the facility with Hansonell and Luce, that was the engineering firms chosen, and in August 2021, a CMGC contract with Vancon was approved, as they were the low bidder, and the value engineering process began and commenced to determine the anticipated cost of construction on the tank. In September 2021, Santaquin, it's important to note that Santaquin City also approved the purchase of pipe. So, we obligated ourselves for the purchase of pipe, because pipe prices were going all over the place at that time, and we knew that we needed to lock in the prices so that we had the best possible value for our residents in the long term. So, we've, part of this project has already been obligated. We still need the financial package to make it so that it's a possibility. So, the real question is, with regard to bonding, existing versus new. So, first, what is the parameter, what is a parameters resolution? What's before you this evening? A parameters resolution is the maximum, it's the limit, it's the parameters. You can't go beyond this limit, that limit, or this other limit. What are those limits? It's the amount that the city would borrow, the interest rate that we would borrow at, and the duration of the loan. And the maximum parameters that are outlined in here are 11.5 million, 5% in 21 years. We do anticipate that the bond would be 11.5 million, actually, 11.1 million is what we, our budget is really targeted at, and that may come in less if certain grant applications are approved going forward. 5% is much higher of an interest rate than we anticipate. Our last bond, because of our good credit rating, came in at 1.43%. We're not sure until it goes out to bid what that interest rate would be, but we have to put a parameters that's reasonable, that we're not going to exceed. And it is anticipated that this would be a 20-year bond, and so you always have to have one year for the construction. We are, as I mentioned, contractually obligated. It is something that we have to provide our residents, and with the number of units coming into the Summit Ridge area, there is a real stress on our culinary tank at this time, and that makes it difficult not only to be able to provide water for both systems, but also to have the necessary fire flows. This additional tank will allow us to have an irrigation source for the irrigation water and create a great relief to our culinary system. It creates irrigation water, as I mentioned, to a third of our city, and nearly 100% of our community would be on irrigation sources, which is fantastic. The budget we have right now is anticipated at about 6.9 million for the tank construction, about a half a million for design and construction management, about 1.125,000 to 130,000 for electrical with Rocky Mountain Power. We have a kind of a lumped-in amount for land acquisition, bonding, legal, and mostly contingency, because we're in such a dynamic contracting market. It's really challenging for us to lock in contractors and subcontractors. We've seen this on our city hall project, and so we have plenty of buffer in there until those contracts are locked in place, so that we don't have to come back and try to go back to our financial partners to try to acquire more money. We have the bandwidth, and we can always borrow less. And then, and then the key to this entire project is that we are refinancing and lowering the interest rate. They call it refunding, not refinancing, on a bond, but what that really is saying is that Santaquin City, about 15, 16 years ago, put in its secondary irrigation system with its secondary meters throughout our community, and we bonded, and our payment on that bond is roughly a half million dollars per year. By refunding or refinancing and rolling this into this tank project, we will lower the interest rate, saving money for the residents on that payment, and we will stretch the entire duration, and the incremental cost is about 80 to 100,000 dollars. So, our payment will go from about 580, or 500 to about 580 to 600, depending upon how the bids come in for that bond. And so incrementally, it's not a significant increase, yet it meets that contractual obligation. So, what's the point of the picture on the side there? Well, it always comes down to who should pay for infrastructure, and clearly, this is an impact that will provide benefit to the newest residents moving in, and it's something that the new residents should pay for. So, the approval of this bond in its current format utilizes the irrigation and culinary sources as a collateral, but the impact fees of new homes coming in will pay for this tank. I only bring this up, and I've brought it up two or three times, and I brought it up in Santaquin University, that I know a lot of people are concerned about the amount of debt that we take on, and there is a thought process that, if we refer this, if we put it out to the voters, maybe we can stop it. Well, we are contractually obligated to provide it, and I just want to really stress that to our residents. What is the outcome if something like that were to happen? Well, if a bond were put out to, were referred, and it were put out to the voters and enough signatures were collected, then there's a potential it could be voted down. But, where we're contractually obligated, there would be an immediate lawsuit that we would have to provide this. We would immediately lose that lawsuit, and there would be then a property tax imposed by the court on the city to put in this infrastructure, and therefore, our existing residents pay for that cost, instead of the new residents paying for that cost. I just want to stress that. This is an important bond for us to take on, so that the new residents, who are creating the impact through their impact fees, pay the cost, their proportionate share, so that they can enjoy the same irrigation and culinary water that all the rest of the community currently enjoys. They're creating the impact, they should pay for the impact, and that's kind of how it's set up, and I just want to make that really clear, because I don't think we educate enough on this type of subject. So, as far as bonding is concerned, there's many steps involved. The very first step is for you, the council, to adopt this parameters resolution, and that establishes the timeline that where it can move forward. It'll be advertised by our financial partners and our bonding attorney, which is, our financial partners are Zions Bank Public Finance, and our bond attorney is Gilson and Bell, or Gilmore Bell, Randy Larson is our attorney there. And this starts the entire process. There is a 30-day contest period, there will be advertisements, there will be a public hearing that will be held, I believe, on November 16th, and that'll take this entire process forward. As the more becomes known with our design, as it becomes complete, our bids and our contractor information becomes complete, land acquisition becomes complete, those tighten up the numbers, and then ultimately, the bond will be pulled for an amount less than what is in the parameters. So, what is before you is a very wordy motion, but this is the motion that we would recommend, so that we're fully compliant and meeting state code. Is there any questions that the council may have?
Any questions?
Yeah, I know we looked at timeframe. Would you just talk about that briefly? Because I was one of the ones that helped look at contract and stuff on that. If you'd just talk about how long this will take before we have the tank and we're putting in lines and that whole thing.
So, there's two forms of timing on this. The first one is the bonding process, and with the start here, it is anticipated that this bond would close before calendar year-end. The design is going forward right now, and we anticipate within the next 30 to 45 days, having all of the design complete and being able to lock in the costs. So, we're kind of working in that concurrently by getting all the bids and everything in. We anticipate that by calendar year-end, that you'll be able to do what's called a guaranteed maximum price, and you'll know what the cost of the project is, and you'll be able to have that corresponding with the bond amount. And then, our goal is to be able to have the tank constructed by July 24th, so that the tank itself can be a resource and a volume of storage that can be able to be pumped up into and fill the irrigation system. However, it's gonna take longer to put the piping in and the booster pump station, so our existing pump station is gonna be supplying that for a time until the new booster pump station will come in, and that project will continue through the summer until the fall of next year.
Correct.
Okay, I look for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve Resolution 10-1, 2021, Resolution of the City Council of Santaquin City, Utah, the issuer authorizing the issuance of sale of not more than $11,340,000 aggregate.
500.
500, sorry. Looks like a three from here. Aggregate principal amount of water revenue and refunding bonds, Series 2021, the bonds, fixing the maximum aggregate principal amount of the bonds, the maximum number of years over which the bonds may mature, the maximum interest rate which the bonds may bear, and the maximum discount from par at which the bonds may be sold. Delegating to certain officers of the issuer the authority to approve the final terms and provisions of the bonds within the parameters set forth herein, providing for the publication of a notice of public hearing and bonds to be issued, providing for the running of a contest period, and setting of a public hearing date. Authorizing and approving the execution of a supplemental indenture of trust, a bond purchase agreement, and other documents required in connection therewith. Authorizing the taking of all other actions necessary to the consummation of the transactions contemplated by this resolution and related matters.
Good job. Very much. Motion by Councilman Meekum, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Hathaway. Any further discussion on this resolution? Okay. Councilmember Bowman.
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya.
Aye.
Councilman Meekum.
Aye.
Councilman Hathaway.
Aye.
Thank you, it was unanimous. All right. Item number eight, discussion of possible action, rebar for Summit Ridge water tank and booster pump.
Very much like the acquisition of pipe and locking in a price, our engineering staff and our contractor have looked at the cost of rebar, and it is anticipated that that cost will increase in the very near future. We have the ability to lock that in, and so, Norm, do you have anything else to say?
No. So, not only the price, but the availability of rebar has, again, with the crazy market that we're in, goes up and down and is constantly changing. The information that we provided to you tonight is for a, to be able to lock that price in and get the order coming, so that by the time the bond is done and we get a guaranteed maximum price, they can hit the ground and start building that tank this winter time to help us get it online earlier next year.
I do want to make sure that I warn the council that without the bond being fully approved and executed, there is a certain amount of risk by signing this, as well as the piping, because we are committing the city and the bonding process is still moving forward, so, in full disclosure.
So, if it doesn't, we can go into pipe and rebar business?
Might be able to flip it and make some money, I don't know.
Well, I can tell you right now, how many of you tried to get off the freeway at 1400 North in Springville? Only to be confronted with a big road closed sign.
Yep.
And you know why it's closed?
Can't get the stuff.
Because you've iduck over the railroad tracks there, it's fallen apart, and they didn't realize it until they milled it to do an overlay on the road, and they saw holes falling through down onto the railroad tracks. The rebar was rusted out, and they're waiting for rebar. So, and permits for the railroad, of course.
And it's already been closed for months.
Yeah, oh yeah, and they're not a whole lot closer than they were, clear back then. So, yeah, it's all over, the supply and demand, so. All right, I look for a motion on this.
We did receive three bids, and the low bidder was Harris Rebar. On that, they can provide the rebar at the time that we need it and at the amount that was specified, and so, the question was, should we move forward at this time? We just wanted to make sure that there is full disclosure of that, and if so, there is a recommended motion.
Okay. I'd accept that motion.
The whole thing, or just the motion part?
Just the motion part.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve a purchase order for the rebar needed for the Summit Ridge irrigation tank and booster pump project with Harris Rebar via Vancon Inc. in an amount not to exceed $317,870.27.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Montoya. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Councilmember Bowman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Say nay. Thank you. All right. Reports. City Manager Benjamin Reeves.
I just have four quick things to report, and if there's any questions, the council can definitely jump in. First, we did, based on the council's work meeting last time, we have sent the notifications out to those who would be interested in the discussion regarding Third West and its potential from going from a one-way street to a two-way street. That was mailed to 506 residents. Everybody on Second West, going west all the way to Fifth West, going all the way north to the entire, taking that entire north quadrant of town, has been mailed this notification letter. It's also been put on Facebook, and then we will be publishing it as our standard meeting publication procedures would dictate, by putting it on our website and our Facebook and everything with the upcoming meeting when it is posted. So...
This is the next council meeting, then?
It will be a public hearing on the second, and so, knowing that it went to 506 residents and knowing that we can't fit 506 residents here, I made sure to include it as email comments, and people can watch it virtually on YouTube. So, you, for the public that doesn't know, anyone who emails publiccomments@santaquin.org, that not only comes to the city staff, but it's automatically forwarded to the council electronically, and so you may, as council, get all of these automatic feeds. Just remember that up until the public hearing, because it is a public hearing, those would be coming in and being made part of the public record, and then the council would probably in a subsequent meeting decide on how best to move forward. And so, I would, I just want to maybe preface to the public that the council will likely not be responding to every single individual email up until that period of time. After the public hearing, the council may selectively decide to respond, because the council will likely just, to likely respond in the meeting itself, when this is discussed and acted upon. Holiday meeting schedule, we have some cancellations and whatnot, so we're envisioning a change. We just want to make sure that the public is aware of some of the date changes of some of our meetings. Our regular meetings are the first and the third Wednesday, or Tuesdays, I'm sorry, and so that would be November 9th, or 2nd, and the Planning Commission meets on the 9th, the City Council meets on the 16th. Planning Commission is canceling their meeting on the 23rd because of Thanksgiving.
So, it's not a cancellation, it's just not a regular meeting?
It was the second meeting of...
Right, right.
It would normally be a regular meeting, but...
Right, it never was a regular, or never was a meeting to be canceled, I guess is what I'm saying, in semantics, but...
At the beginning of the year, you do approve the meet on the first and the third, or second and the fourth Tuesdays of every...
Anyway, okay.
Okay.
Moving on. There's no meeting that night.
That's right.
The public would normally expect a meeting on the 4th, and it's canceled. Historically, we've always canceled the first meeting of December of the council in lieu of a staff event that we have that night, and therefore, we call a special meeting of the city council on the 14th. Because it is a four-week period, and there's a fifth Tuesday in between there, we're anticipating a special meeting being held on November 30th. It may not be a very heavy meeting, maybe just approving bills and being responsive to the public, but we anticipate that on that fifth Tuesday, November 30th, we will have a possible meeting if there's action items to be acted upon, and the mayor calls it. But on December 14th, where we would have a city council and Planning Commission meeting, we will likely forego the work meeting, the city council would meet for its work meeting as a regular meeting, and end it in time for the city, our Planning Commission... and end it in time for the city, our Planning Commission to have its regular meeting that same night. December twenty-first is anticipated to be canceled for Christmas. And there may or may not be a need, just anticipating that we may have one on the twenty-eighth. That one is less likely to be called, but we wanted to make sure that the public was made aware that we may call one. And this was put into the newsletter coming up, so. We had a wonderful Columbus Day of service and training. We had Major General Jeff Burton come and speak to us as well as members of Blumquist Hale, who's the Employee Assistance Program, come and speak. The staff got together for training and put together two hundred gift baskets for our seniors that will be distributed. And then had a great opportunity to, to share the afternoon into the evening at the Red Barn with their families. And so it was a great opportunity. It's our fifth year, we've been doing this since two thousand seventeen. And it's great to get the entire staff together to do some training all at once. And so we, we just want to thank the public for their understanding while we had the offices closed on Columbus Day. And then the general plan effort continues. We had a great meeting, I think probably our most productive meeting that we've had, where we've gone beyond the survey results to really put together a draft Imagine Santaquin Vision Statement. Got some comment, we had some of the farmers come and, and got some feedback from them. And that was one of the concerns that was brought up and, and, and so we got some good feedback there. And did some wordsmithing with the group on the Imagine Santaquin Vision Statement. There will be an effort to have that reviewed one more time by the steering committee and then invite the public to come in and, and kind of have a celebration on the vision portion, which is a major milestone in the general plan effort that then leads itself to be the foundational basis for the overall drafting of the general plan. Of course, that becomes the foundational basis for updates to our city code and creating a legislative direction for our community to grow in a manner that's in support of what the community would desire. So we appreciate the public's input thus far. That's my report. Does the council have any questions?
May I just make a quick comment that I will not be available on December twenty-eighth? My son's getting married that day, so I do kind of have a good excuse. It is kind of important for the mother of the groom to be present and.
And that was just a maybe.
Right. I'm, I'm just throwing it out there just in case.
Yep.
Just letting you know now.
You don't want to zoom in from the dance floor or anything?
Uh, no. No. I'll be zooming across the dance floor.
Anything else for Ben? Assistant City Manager Norman Beadley.
Yeah, so the geotechnical work has begun for the, the next phase of the East Prince Debris Basins. You may see some track hole work going on up there. Right now, they're in the, the wall orchard just north of the potential, the, the future Gray Cliffs development. That's probably a little less visible, but they will be more visible as they are up above Maverick here in the next couple of weeks to be able to do some trenches and looking for fault lines and that kind of thing. So just, if you have questions or whatever, that's where that's coming from. Also, we have a, a, you may recall the last year or so, we've had a couple of vacations of, of parcels that were deeded to the city that the city either doesn't need or, or were mistakes or something of that nature. We've got more of that coming up in Foothill. We'll probably be bringing that to you to the next meeting. Just on this one, it was because the trail was originally planned on one side of the road and now it's on the other side of the road. So there's a bigger right-of-way on the, on the side that the trail is now not going to be on that we would propose to vacate and, and deed back to those property owners that are adjacent to that. If you have any questions or concerns with that, I'd have you get with me. But it's, it's fairly similar to some of the ones that we've done recently just to let folks have a little bit more enjoyment of property that they're going to be taking care of anyway. And, and because we don't need that on that one side of the road, there's nine parcels, but it's really only two current city parcels. There's nine homeowners that that would go back to and we'll bring that to you forward next, at the next meeting. Just again, finishing up development work for the year and moving forward that way. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
So you're getting some electrical in over there on Highland Drive and Canyon Road, electrical conduits?
Yes, we're getting electrical in there. There will be two street lights there at the end of the project there, that's correct. Yep.
All right. Community Development Director Jason Bond.
Yeah, just a couple of things for you, just giving you an idea of what's coming through the, the development process. Next Tuesday, DRC, we've got a plat amendment in the Summit Ridge Town Homes. They're wanting to take two plats and basically combine them into one because it's just a change of the phasing plan. It's considered a minor change, so it can be taken care of administratively by, by the DRC. And then in conjunction with that, it would be considering the final plat for, for plat E, which is a combination of plats E and F. So, those are there. We have a concept plan for the Santaquin Estates Development. This is something the council saw their work, work meeting last council meeting. So both DRC and Planning Commission will have that on their agenda and will review the concept plan. There is a public hearing for the Planning Commission meeting where we'll have the residents and Planning Commission, everybody review and provide some feedback on that. So those, those are the things that, that we're expecting. There's some other things that are in the works. We're, we're hopeful that we can help move forward the, the subdivision, the commercial subdivision in the Ridley's Development. They're, they're considering just moving forward with two lots rather than the three. The third lot, there's, there's some unknowns there and, and being able to, to meet some of the requirements to, to get that to happen. But they have, they'll probably reduce that to two and, and help that move forward. So those are the things that are really kind of on the docket and happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions? Doing a good job. Thank you. All right, Councilmember Montoya, anything to report?
The youth council is going to be helping with the spooky night at the museum, which is this Saturday and then again on Monday. So from six-thirty to nine, I think, or nine-thirty. So I hope that families will look that up and pay attention to the banner posters that are hanging around town and, and go out to the museum. It should be a fun event.
Is that question on that? I've seen the banners and stuff. Is that just donations? Will you donate or is there a cost?
It is.
I've had a few people ask and wasn't sure.
I am not positive how much it costs because I didn't help plan it. I just know that the youth, the youth council. Well, it is, there is a cost to it.
Right.
But I'm not sure if it's per family or per person. The youth council was just asked to help with it. But it is, I think, in the, the newsletter. The, all the information is in the newsletter. And then the mayor's Halloween walk will be Saturday, the thirtieth. And the youth council will be helping with that too. And they have some very fun plans and events coming up for the rest of the year. And they're just the best and.
Three dollars per person, by the way, for anyone watching.
Three dollars.
Per person.
Three dollars per person for the spooky night. Great. Thank you.
There you go.
Free if they're under three.
It's easy to remember.
That's good to know. That's good to know. We were just asked to help with some games. So I stay in my lane. So I'm really excited about the things that are happening. As was already reported, we had a very, very productive, healthy, positive general plan meeting last week. And so I look forward to the next step in the process and that's fantastic. So thanks to those who are showing up.
Okay. That it?
That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Rekum, anything to report?
Just, I participated in the, the morning part of the Columbus Day activities. I thought it was very positive.
It's great.
Great event. Just glad that we do that. Thanks for doing that. Keep that up. It's good for, good for the, the employees to have that day. Anyway, I, I just appreciate that. That's all I have.
Okay, Councilman Hathaway.
Yeah, for anybody that's interested, the Thursday night at five-thirty is the Historic Preservation Meeting. If anybody wants to come and listen to that, there's usually some good stuff in there. And then I just want to make a comment, being the councilman on two water boards. I, I just want the residents to understand that the water tank is, is a very needed thing. I, I hope they don't think that it's just something we're not doing just because, but I think it'll benefit this city for a very long time. So I hope that they will understand and know that it's necessary.
Not only for yards, but for fire flows to protect the homes out there.
Yeah, it covers, it, it just helps all the way around, I think.
Norm, what's the average lifetime of a water tank like we're building?
I would say seventy-five to a hundred years.
You can wind them after that, can't you?
Yeah, for sure, yeah. Yeah, so that's what, that's what they call a design life. They like would last longer than that. But when we build a facility or design a facility like that, we typically look at a, at a seventy-five to a hundred-year lifespan.
Thank you. Thank you, David. Anything else?
That's it.
Councilmember Bowman, anything to report?
Um, nothing other than our emergency preparedness board. We really need people. So if you have experience in that or interests, or you don't even have to have experience, you're interested in helping out.
Chris is on that with you, Benquist? Are you working with the three stakes that are in Santaquin?
I'm trying to. I mean, my stake's a little involved, but I mean, it's, it's been honestly a challenge.
Let me know when you're meeting and I, I'll make sure, at least the Santaquin stake, we'll have to get the North stake involved.
We're trying to have businesses involved too. All the businesses I've talked to have not.
We've got to do it.
Been very responsive. So if you guys know of anybody or you're interested, email me or Chris.
Thank you.
Yep.
For my report, I think this would be of interest to, to all of us. I received an email just last night from Luke Decker. Remember him?
Yeah.
And he, it says, hello, mayor, I just wanted to forward this update. It looks like it came in Friday last week, but he finally got it to me. I apologize, I've been out of town and it looks like work started today, meaning yesterday. Okay? Project update, Harrison Oil Field Services Incorporated will be mobilizing to begin work on Phase One of the reconstruction project starting ten eighteen, twenty twenty-one, which is yesterday. Phase one will include debris removal along the entire project and reconstruction of the two westernmost road damage bank stabilization sites, Sites One and Two. Please get the word out that there will be heavy truck and construction traffic. There is a closure order, this closure order applies to all forest visitors, pedestrians, bikes, motorized vehicles, et cetera. This is to ensure the safety of the public and our contractors as they work in the narrow canyon with limited space and visibility. Our construction contractors greatly appreciate folks understanding the closure so they can work safely and efficiently to get the road back open as soon as possible. Project updates and photos will be provided in order to share the project progress. So this will go out, we'll, we'll put it out on all the, the city's information things for people to stay away. But there will be increased truck traffic and, and construction traffic and I'm just excited. I drove up there today just to see if anybody was up there. It was a ghost town still. So with the weather, it's understandable. Yes.
Very good news.
Couple of weeks ago, I was.
You want to come up and so if people on Facebook or on YouTube can hear you, if you would, please? Thanks, Dan.
Dan Olson.
Thank you.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Uh, the City Recreation Department contacted me two weeks ago to hold a hike with senior citizens tomorrow morning at ten o'clock. You better get that count canceled or we have a problem.
Okay. All right.
Yeah.
Because if it's good weather in the morning, which it's supposed to be, they're, they'll be moving in.
Okay, so I'm just not going to go. Maybe I'll go something else. And, and a question, does, do they allow you to go up to where the gate is still?
I don't know that.
Or are they going to close it off down lower?
They'll close it right at the mouth of Canyon or, or not. I don't know.
Okay. Well, that'd be good to know and, and put out.
We'll have paint posts go out tomorrow and we're just excited to see the canyon start to have some construction.
After three years, so.
Yep.
That's my report. If there's nothing else.
So just one thing, and I apologize for this, I should have probably reported on this. But just so the public can start to, to know about it and, and put it on their calendars, the next public open house for the general plan is November eighteenth. So seven to eight-thirty. So we wanted to get that word out sooner than later so the people can start to plan for that. It's really going to be, we're calling it a celebration of, of the vision. We're, we're kind of to a checkpoint in this process to where we'll have a better idea of, of what the vision is, what the committee's been, been able to work on in drafting that vision. And this is all based off of the, the survey responses that we, that we received over the past couple of months. So just wanted to get that out there. November eighteenth is the next public vision or the public meeting for the general plan.
Thank you. Look for a motion to adjourn.
May I add something else?
Come on, you're killing me here. Yes, go ahead.
You always should know by now, if my report is short, there's going to be something else that I remember that I forgot to write down. Anyway, I would like to give a shout out, first of all, to Mrs. Weinicker, the lady who takes care of the flower boxes all summer long. Nobody asks her to do that. She does it out of the goodness of her heart and donates her time and brings her garden tools and gloves in the back of her car and parks at the pharmacy and along other places and just walks up and down and deadheads and pulls weeds and.
David knows her.
And, yeah, so I've stopped and said thank you to her before and so a shout out to her. And another shout out that I, I hope I don't get emotional saying this one, but I've been going to have lunch with the seniors because I don't have an afternoon preschool class this year. And what a delightful thing to do, to spend time with the seniors in our community. They're, they're just fantastic. And so thank you to Val and Judy Robbins. They work really hard and Sarah and, and the other workers in the kitchen. And they just do a phenomenal job and they have entertainment and they give announcements about services that the seniors can take advantage of that help them, like the heat program and home health. And there are seniors who bring produce from their gardens and just set it on the benches in the back and say, anybody who wants tomatoes, anybody who wants apples, anybody who wants eggs. And it's just a really fun time. And the first couple of weeks when I went, they looked at me like, why are you here? I guess I'm, I guess I don't look quite old enough to be there. But, but they've welcomed me and, and now, you know, they wave at me and smile and, and it's, it's just delightful. So I wanted to mention that program in our community that is, not, not only exists, but is thriving and, and provides a wonderful, wonderful service to the, the seniors in our community. So thank you for letting me add that.
You're welcome. I'm going to give a shout out too, to the council for all you do, for being here and dealing with the, the issues and doing it positively. I, I thank you for that. I know we're missing Nick tonight, but we couldn't do it without you. None of us could, so thank you. And I want to thank the veterans in the American Legion post for all they do for our community. And they're always going to be a part of us. And we thank you. So look for a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Montoya. Do you have a second?
A second.
Second by Councilmember Bowman. All in favor, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Thank you.